Lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the San Alina Planning Commission for October 20th, 2015, and ask Commissioner Kistner to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Present.
Commissioner Monet?
Here.
Commissioner Kistner?
Here.
Commissioner, Chairperson Parker?
Present. Moving on to public forum, this is an opportunity for the public to address the commission of items of interest that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion nor take action on matters not described on the agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Would anyone like to speak at public forum? If you could state your name for the record.
My name's Wendell Laidley, and I live on Hunt Avenue. Excuse me. I've been concerned ever since the levy was approved on April 14th, 2009, in this room. Over, not the levy itself so much, but the, yes, its design and its implementation. Particularly, there seemed to be a rush to get the project going. The, well, the, the building of the levy started almost immediately after the meeting, and there seemed to be a rush to get approval of the project to go ahead. Then, at a city council meeting on September 13th, 2011, there was a staff report from interim city manager Karen Scalabrini and then lawyer, excuse me, John Trucksoh, to the council that revealed a number of letters, three, I believe, from developer Hunter, the owner of that property, the levy, is behind, that's behind the levy. And he was making statements like, "It's too late to rezone the property." It, Hunter had constitutional rights to develop his property, and that he had received assurances from presumably city staff or appointed or elected officials to go ahead. Ever since I've, or my experience of a little over a decade in property development and construction building, I've always thought that zoning remained in the exclusive domain of the jurisdiction for who gave out the building permits. And I was concerned, in this case, that things were rushing ahead, assumptions were being made about zoning rights, and I didn't, I didn't see any evidence of building permits, so I just watched. Anyway, after watching a lot, going through the previous administration where the city manager denied knowledge of the existence of the letters, and the, anyway, a bunch of administrative hassle, I decided, I decided today to raise the issue that I don't think developer Hunter has the zoning privileges that he wants to have to develop his property. And I believe this is a threshold issue, in the sense that if he gets his zoning, he'll go ahead and that'll be that. If he doesn't get it, I know that there are a lot of people in the city that deeply, are deeply unhappy about that project. My personal concern is public safety. As a professional engineer, I've always considered public safety an important issue, and that was just left out of the Myers-Nave opinion that basically said the zoning was settled. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak at public forum? Seeing none, I'm going to close that and move on to the consent items tonight. There are two. There is the approval of the minutes from October 6th, 2015, and then a design review exemption from 1850 Howell Mountain Road. Would anyone like to pull either of those issues? All right, we do need to pull the approval minutes for Commissioner Kistner as she was absent, so if we could have a motion to approve the minutes.
Just one other thing on the minutes. In item seven, where you describe the motions, you're missing the verb of what was done. It said moved, it was moved by to, it should either be like approve or disapprove. It's kind of missing there.
In item seven of the minutes?
Yep.
Right.
Both of the motions.
It's moved to item, to do something.
To prove, yeah. I'll make that change.
I think they were both moved to approve them, but.
Good catch.
Thank you.
Oh, same, oh, yeah. It's in two places.
Yeah, it's in both.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the revised minutes?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Kistner? Chairperson Parker?
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the design review exemption from the consent calendar?
So moved.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Parker?
Yes. Thank you very much, if you're in the audience, for that item. Moving on to our public hearings this evening, our first item is a design review for 990 College Avenue. Can we get a staff report, please?
Sure. Thank you, Chairperson Parker. The applicant is proposing to construct a 4,000 square foot, of which approximately 2,000 is covered, outdoor picnic pavilion on vacant land toward the rear of the property at the Stonebridge Apartments. The pavilion would have three covered areas, each of which would be approximately 650 square feet, for a total of approximately 1,950. The pavilion would include two built, built-in propane barbecue grills that would replace several old existing charcoal grills on the apartment grounds. The proposed structure would be approximately 14 feet, 10 inches tall. No plumbing or water usage of any kind is proposed with the project. The structure would be located on undeveloped vacant land at the rear of the property and would have no negative visual impact on adjacent properties. Furthermore, the structure will provide apartment tenants with functional outdoor space and will be a great asset to the residents of the Stonebridge Apartments. For these reasons, staff is recommending approval of the project at this time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff at this time?
I don't know if this is the right time, but I'll ask anyway. It's, on the planning, planning department conditions of approval, is now the right time to ask about that?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. I just, I noticed that the lighting, the exterior lighting, it talks about the exterior lighting being shielded and preventing glare. And there's, I've never seen anything in these things, but I'm wondering if this is an appropriate place to put something about the noise, too. And the language that I was thinking of, I got from the noise ordinance. But, you know, the lighting, there's an ordinance about lighting, too, but they, but it's put in here because it's especially important. And I'm, to my mind, the, I'm just thinking if there is a possibility of events where there would be amplification of music or anything like that in this pavilion, that we might say something that, you know, just reminding everyone that it needs to be kept at a volume that doesn't disturb the public because the valley at that point has nothing between that area and a lot of residential.
We could put something in there that basically reminds them that the noise ordinance is in effect, because they are subject to the noise ordinance, so.
They are, but I, I would like to see it if that's, if like, put it at number 10 and then, or number 12 or something like that.
That's fine, we can do that.
Okay. Do you want me to, to give you what the, the language that I have, will you do it?
I can find it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
And if we can remember that during the motion, Bobby?
That's just considered a.
If, so it goes that direction. Perfect. Any other questions of staff? All right, I'd like to open up the public hearing if the applicant would like to come forward.
Good evening. I'm Ethan Daniels with EAH. I'm representing Stonebridge Apartments.
I can't quite hear you.
Sorry. Ethan Daniels with EAH, representing Stonebridge Apartments. I would just like to say that this proposal is a few years in the works. Our tenants there, we have 80 families and over 250 residents that have wanted, you know, an outdoor central location for them to congregate. We feel that this would be a nice accommodation for them. We've worked with Erin, and we'll be working with Jim to make sure that the city's, you know, interests and in compliance with noise regulations is 100% in check. So I'm here with my architect, Wade Erbault, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant?
Very clear.
Perfect, very clear points. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and invite Commissioner Discussion. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first. I like the project a lot. I've been to a lot of community events they've had out there in the field without cover. I think this will serve the purpose of some of the events that they have there, and they're usually in the afternoon. You don't usually see very many people over there at night. It also kind of reflects some of the building from the project next door, which is the Montessori School. I think the architecture is quite similar on, on the way they've put the buildings together. I think it's a real good project. I think you guys have done a really good job, and I support you a lot.
I'm, I guess I do have a question, or I'm wondering, is there an interface between the Stonebridge residence and city use? Is there any overlap?
No.
None? Okay. Yeah, I think that, I think it's a wonderful project, and I, I support it completely.
Thank you. Commissioner Sweeney or Coburnstein?
I have nothing to add.
Nothing to add. It's very thorough, the paper.
Let me answer Bobby's question. It's, this is basically for the residents. However, it's, it's, was a city project, it's a city, it belongs to the city. The city's just refinanced it for them. Some very prominent citizens, led by Dave Garden, are the ones that did this to begin with, and it's, it's really for the residents. But some of the outside folks do get invited to attend to things there. So it's not, it's not that you're going to go rent it, or they're going to do anything like that. And so if that answers your question, that's, that's kind of the rules over there. And it's, it's a nice complex.
Perfect. Thank you for clarifying that. I also am in support of the project, so can we get a motion, please? And Bobby, would you like to do the honors so you can add in your addition?
I've got to find it.
I move that we determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15303, with exempts the construction or conversion of small structures, including accessory structures, garages, carports, patios, pools, et cetera, and that we accept the required findings and grant design review approval for the proposed project located at 990 College Avenue with the changes that we made.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chairperson Parker?
Yes. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number seven, that is going to be continued until an undetermined date in the future. That is a design review for 1508 Spring Street. Next up is design review of 1818 Spring Mountain Court. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairperson Parker. The applicant is seeking design review approval to build a new 290 square foot sunroom, a new entryway on the front of the existing home at 1818 Spring Mountain Court. These changes will require removing two existing windows and enclosing the existing entryway. Eight glass panels and a new stone veneer covered entryway would be added under a new gable roofing. A new walkway would be constructed to connect to the, to the existing sidewalk. The height of the one-story home would remain unchanged at approximately 16 feet, 3 inches. While it isn't common for sunrooms to be constructed on the front elevation of a home, staff finds that overall design elements and proposed materials and finishes are in character with the neighborhood and the community in general. Furthermore, the project would improve the articulation of the roofline and would not adversely affect adjacent properties. Because of this, staff is recommending approval of the project, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Does anyone have any questions of staff at this time?
I just have one question. How do we know where the front lot line is? How do you know, I'm used to coming from areas where you always have a survey of the property, and then you see the distance from the front of the building to the property line. Are the property lines coexistent with the sidewalk, or how do we know?
Generally, the property line is at the, behind the sidewalk, but we do not require surveys to determine that. So it's, it's, it's at the developer's risk should they build something that causes a property line issue. However, if there is question, it tends to be addressed through the building permit process. For example, I was on a building site today where there was a question with the building official, and we, so essentially, if we need a survey, we do require it, but typically we don't upfront.
Okay. And this, these tiny little numbers on this drawing that I have, which I can barely read, it looks like it's 20 feet, 6 inches from the front. Is that what's proposed?
Not sure which one you're looking at.
I'm looking at the site plan.
Yeah, that's correct. 20, 20 feet.
That's the setback of the new construction.
Correct.
From the sidewalk, which we're assuming is the front property line.
20 feet, 6 inches.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions of staff? I'd like to invite the applicant up and open up the public hearing.
Good evening. My name's Dave Kennedy from Built by Kennedy, Inc., out of Napa, and we are representing Cheryl Lesman in this project. Is there any questions that I can answer for you?
Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and invite Commissioner Discussion. Who would like to go first?
Well, I'll jump in. I have no issue with this. I think it's consistent with the neighborhood. I think a sun porch is a wonderful thing when it gets a little cooler. And it seemed to me, when I, I did go visit the property, I didn't meet with the applicant, but the extension forward is kind of roughly about where your, your fence comes right now, which seems like it's pretty much in line with the house to the north of it, which projects, you know, towards the street. I think, I think it's a nice improvement.
I agree with you, Mary. And I also agree with you making the comment about not being able to read the drawings. I, I'm going to go right back at it again. I think we need better documentation, and I think sooner or later, we're going to stop approving things if we don't get the documentation that we can read, and that we don't see what the materials, et cetera, are. It's, we've been asking for this on and on and on, and one of these days, I think it's going to have to come to an end. I like this project, by the way. I'm not, I'm not fussing your project at all.
One thing to that.
Of course.
Along those lines, I did email the staff today and ask them to provide a copy of the assessors map, which I personally find very helpful when we look at these cases. You get an overall view of the neighborhood, you see the lots, you see how they relate to each other, and I should think that should be a requirement of every applicant, or if the applicant provides it or the staff provides it.
We can add those moving forward to everyone, no problem.
Okay.
Maybe we ought to make a list of things we want and bring it back, Mary.
Well, I'll tell you what I've done with some of them.
I agree with you also on this one.
Yeah, I go on the assessors website, and I look and see what they say about the square footage of all the other houses around. And it's not totally accurate, but it, maybe, but it's very close. It gives you an idea.
I tend to use Zillow.
But it's, it's helpful, you know, and until I saw this, I didn't exactly know the configuration of the lot. I wasn't sure. So I appreciate you providing it.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's really pretty. It's, and no neighbors are against it, and it doesn't do anything to the water. There's no water issue, and so, and it's, it looks nice, and I like it. Support it wholeheartedly.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Nope, nothing to add.
All right. Same.
I mean, we don't need extra words.
All right, perfect. I also am in agreement. I think it's a beautiful project, so if we can have a motion.
I move that we determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15301, which exempts the minor alteration of existing private structures, and that we accept the required findings and approved design review for the proposed project located at 1818 Spring Mountain Court.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chairperson Parker?
Yes. Thank you very much. Moving on to our next item, this is a discussion item. It's the Planning Commission Policy and Procedure Bylaws. If we could have a staff instruction.
Thank you, Chair Parker. So as mentioned last meeting, the bylaws are provided to the commission for their review. Staff has a brief presentation, and how staff is imagining this discussion to go is that, staff has a brief presentation with a few recommended changes. Then, staff would like to hear any questions from the commission on clarification, or if there's any clarification needed, or questions in general. And then PC discussion of bylaws, and maybe an individual discussion on each, if a, if a rule is, if one chair member or one staff member, I'm sorry, commissioner, has a question or a concern over a rule, that rule could be discussed by the entire commission in its entirety, just to, to help staff kind of keep each.
So, yeah, so after, so after the staff report, I would like it if we could go through each of the rules, and then we'll just go through only the rules that we have issues with, and then we can leave alone rules that we're fine with. So.
Thank you. And then the idea is that staff will, we don't need a wordsmithing to occur here at the meeting, but staff will take your direction, make some revisions, work with the city attorney to get them into an acceptable format, bring them back for adoption by the commission, and then ultimately, the council has to approve the changes to the bylaws. And so I also provided a copy of the San Alina Protocol for Committees, Commissions, and Boards. That's an adopted document by the council. It's related to the bylaws. It doesn't have a lot of specific direction for the bylaws. It's just more kind of protocol and behavior. But essentially, the first item on the, that staff would like to discuss is rule number one, which talks about a vote for the chairperson and vice chair. Talks about July being the day, or the first meeting of July being the day that that occurs. Obviously, we're a little bit late. I think that tends to be the case, and so, so there was some discussion with the chair in reviewing the agenda of potentially changing the July date. That's up to the commission if they feel that's necessary. But either way, staff does, would like the commission to set a date to have a vote for the chair and the vice chair. And please, just as a reminder, to limit your discussion amongst yourselves on that per the Brown Act regulations. We cannot have discussion amongst commissioners regarding the vote outside of this chamber due to Brown Act requirements, so just a reminder of that. Staff, I just wanted to point out rule number 13, which essentially gives direction or deference to the council on non, non-agendized or formal action items. So, so here in San Alina, a lot of folks like to bring their concepts before decision-making bodies to kind of get some general feedback before they spend a lot of time formalizing them. This is just a reminder that that's a role for the city council and not for the planning commission, so I think that rule is important. If you look at rule number 14, it's very prescriptive, and staff recommends consolidating some of this to be more general. You know, there's a lot of things identified on there that, that don't come up a lot, and so I don't know how often it needs to be prescribed in how the regular order of business would be. So if you have some input on that, staff would appreciate it, but, but staff's recommendation is to consolidate that a little bit, make it more general. Similarly, just rule number 18, the importance of that is monumental, essentially, as, as some kind of higher-level projects come in or more complex projects, it's very common for staff to get late input. And so just kind of pointing out that the procedures, which identify how staff brings that up to the commission, is, are important. Currently, staff, up until a certain cutoff point, will provide all those, any late communication electronically directly to the commission and bring hard copies. Things that come in after staff is able to consolidate them and provide an email will be provided in hard copy at the dais, and then we also provide hard copies in the public folder, so those are available. The, the rule number 18 references that if, you know, there's expectation for a lot of participants, copies should be made available for a larger number, and staff tries to gauge that. So that is something we currently do. Rule number 20, staff is recommending changing some of the language. Just the term rebuttal is a little bit, it seems to have more of a conflict, whereas staff tends to recommend response. There's identification of five minutes per person, but three minutes is the, the current practice, and so that's a recommended change, change from staff.
Change to five minutes?
From five minutes to three minutes. And then, from the staff's perspective, the kind of back and forth of F, G, H, and I tends to be a little bit excessive from staff's perspective, and kind of can elevate some of the feelings about certain items. And so staff is actually recommending that H and I be eliminated from those procedures. It's for the commission's review and consent, obviously, but staff's recommendation is that public comment in support or opposition, so letter F, and then staff and applicant's response if there's additional questions that are, that are raised from those public comments, or if the applicant wants to give a response, and then closing the public hearing and allowing the commission to then take their, their time to have that discussion. That is a recommendation from staff. And that is the last of the recommendations staff has. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the commission for discussion.
Okay.
Or questions first.
Does anyone have any questions at this time? All right, I'd like to just, okay, but, yeah, so if, I'm going to go start with Commissioner Coburnstein, if you could just tell me what rules you would like us to discuss?
In addition to what the staff.
Yes.
23.
All right.
That's the only.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner Sweeney? Okay. Commissioner?
I didn't hear.
23, it was for her as well.
And everything else that.
And Noah's. Commissioner Kistner?
Well, I have some, I have some questions I don't, I think we should discuss.
Okay. Which rules?
I, I agree with, I agree with what the planning director said on rule 14. I, I think that we need to look at, at rule 11 only because of the fact that we're not getting all the data we want.
Okay.
And I'd like to know what the difference between 17 and 18 is. What else did I have here? I also wanted to discuss 23.
Okay.
I think that was it.
All right, perfect. And then Commissioner Monet?
Let's see, 27, 19, 24.
Wait, 27?
No, 7.
Oh, wait, 7.
19, 24.
19, 24, okay.
27, 28, 30, no, 27, 28, 29.
Okay.
32 and 33, and also 20, and the 20 doesn't, I think that knowledge is, I just have a question.
Okay. All right, so let's start with rule number one. The commission shall elect a chairperson and vice chair and designate a secretary at the first regular meeting of the planning commission in July to serve for a period of one year from the date of their election.
May I make a comment on that? I believe that that was set, because I believe that the terms expire in June, and therefore I think the election would be in July. And I think the reason that we got off kilter is because we've had so many of the commissioners quit in the last two or three years. But we were doing it in July.
Okay.
And, and, and the reason for that is because of the, the fact that they are appointed, and the new commissions are appointed.
Our terms are expired.
So it makes sense to me, the way it's written.
To keep it in July.
Yeah. And, and I don't know how long you've been chair, but.
Since December.
Uh huh.
Since December.
I think we should just let it go till next July and, and then start then.
Okay.
That's my personal opinion.
Anyone else? I mean, the July does make sense for the June expiration dates.
Well, that was why it was set.
But is there a, what's, is there a term requirement of one year?
It's one year, yeah.
So if we push it to, that's going to extend the term without?
You can do that.
You can do, that's okay? Or, but my sense is, why don't we just add language in July unless otherwise?
Or, my sense is, why don't we just add language in July unless otherwise necessary? And that would cover, that would cover situations like this and keep all the terms to a year, if that seems to be important to anyone. It seems, seems to me.
I think it's important, because what I think, if I'm hearing, you're saying, Grace, is that, so you were, you'll been chair in December a year, and then stay on additional, so you'd be chair eighteen months?
Yeah.
I think that.
We should honor the rule.
I mean, if, I think there's a value in having.
Except I don't know how you ever get back to the year that way, crazy.
But then we never get back to July.
That's my problem there. I don't know how you ever get back to July, and you've got new commissioners.
Commissioners coming and go.
Well, we've never had so many up until just recently, so.
That's an interesting point.
But that's why.
I think the point is also that the new commissioners get to appoint their chair, and so it's not based on the old guard, that it's based on the new commissioners coming in.
So they'd have to wait six months if we changed it to December to accommodate this particular change?
Then there's value that the new commissioners have time to kind of get settled and understand what effective leadership is, and have a little more input. If you're seated with a group of new commissioners.
Your microphone's not on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Forgot. Everyone left, and I forgot we were meeting. But I think that there is value in letting those new commissioners kind of get settled in and sit with it a bit before they're involved with selecting a chair. I mean, I think there's arguments on both sides, but I do believe that a change of leadership is a good idea. In that vein, I do think that I would like to, I would like to suggest that it be then January, which is at the six-month mark of July, so at least it's on a six-month, and it's even a new calendar year. Yeah.
That sounds great, yeah.
That's reasonable.
So we're going to do this in.
To January. And if you could, you could even go a step further and make a comment to the fact that if we have a change of chair because of, you know, a changeover in commissioners, that we have the option to do an election in July, so that you have an ability to have a chair for a year, but it's not a year and a half because of changeover.
I think.
Because the same thing could happen if we move it to December, and then we have changeover.
That's right.
So I mean, I think that.
Whatever date you pick, it could happen, yeah.
Right, so I think.
I agree, that's why I said that.
I think we should honor the year term and fluctuate the dates as they come up. I mean, that's not, that's not rocket science. It just seems pretty easy. But I'm assuming that the term of a year was set for good reason.
I think that the reason that we got off track because people weren't keeping track of how long the chair term was, and so I think that it is important for us to have a set measuring point, rather than it be fluctuating. I mean, I had to look it up when I was appointed, so, because I wasn't sure. I thought it was October, and it was December, so I think it's important to have a month, to have a measuring mark.
Okay, I would like the flexibility the other way, but you know, that's, I've already stated my opinion.
So staff's hearing changed the, the day of the election of the chair and vice chair to January, and staff's going to recommend the second meeting in January, because the first meeting is often canceled.
And how do you feel about having a secondary, kind of an optional time in July, if necessary, based on turnover in commissioners, resignations?
Couldn't we, couldn't we do that immediately? Like, if somebody is the chair and their term expires.
That's kind of what happens now, though.
Suppose somebody moves, you know, suppose somebody's the chair, and they move in March. Wouldn't you have an election immediately for a new chair, then?
Well, that's what happened in our situation, is that.
Well, you move up to.
The mayor appointed. Did the mayor appoint in that situation, or was it an election?
It was an election. Well, it wasn't, wasn't it just because you were vice chair? No, there was an actual election for it.
Yeah, we elected, we elected a chair.
And the reason that it stayed for the full year is because he had just been elected, and so it didn't make sense to, well, I'm still in, under his term, essentially, so.
See, he was elected in July.
Well, I have an idea.
Two or three months, and then he left.
I think he was elected in.
So why don't we just have some language that if, you know, the chair resigns, or whatever, you know, that as soon as practicable, we'll have a new election and appoint a new chair?
That's fine. But then does it end at the same date?
Then it ends the same date that following year, Mary? That's, I think that's the question.
Okay, I have an idea. If you want to set the date to either be January or July, if that's really important to everybody, then if something happens in between, the chair could be called an interim chair until the, until the time of the election, so that the.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea, because in this case, it would have been an interim chair, and we would have made an election in July.
Yeah.
Yeah, that keeps us on some fixed calendar.
And that's good.
Good idea.
All right, so there's Rule Number One.
You got that, guys?
All right. Okay. Okay, Rule Seven. Bobby, that was one that you wanted to discuss?
Okay, I'm, I just have a question. Let me get back to it. What is the meaning of an additional adjourned meeting may be held? What does that mean?
I was just saying that there is the option for the commission to hold a third meeting, and I think adjourned meeting is just the terminology that's used. I know it's kind of counterintuitive.
Okay, because I just didn't know what that was. Okay, thank you.
All right. Rule 11.
Oh, that's not mine.
Well, I was the one that brought that up because of the way, the last sentence.
That you won't accept it unless it's all data is attached?
Attached, I think, I think it's there, and I think that we've got to start following it.
All right. So this isn't so much to change that you just want us to start enforcing it?
That's it.
All right.
Do we have a list of required data?
There's, the application has checklist, which I will bring back, or staff will bring back, for the review by the commission. I think what Vice Chair Kitchener is looking for is a color and material board. Is that often what you'd like?
I don't mean like anything we had tonight. I mean, it was all little bitty things. But I'm talking about, you know, if we get some of these things where.
That, that, that makes it more discretionary, and so it'll be at the determination of staff, which may not always satisfy the commission, because it's a matter of opinion. But I do understand what you're saying, and so staff will try to come up with some type of metric whereby a color and material board may be required to.
Same way with what Mary asked for today, is the map. I think that's, I think that's imperative we have that. I was really happy to see that this afternoon.
And to see the numbers, and to actually have the measurements is.
Parcel map is no problem, because that's commonly available, and we have it in our office. And it's even available on the website of the assessor. So that's no problem making that a requirement. I'm just imagining adding the expense of a color and material board, or other required things that would have to be prepared by a professional, essentially, for a lot of our projects which are homeowner level, is somewhat challenging.
I don't even think that's true, because, I mean, I've seen it, we did it, what was it, what was the place? Where we had such a big to-do, where they wanted, she wanted to put a, her Dell, she wanted to put the.
Stockton.
Yeah, she wanted to put the corrugated metal on the back of the house, the back of the garage, which faced the street, and she got turned down because the neighbors all raised the devil. And the next thing you know, she painted it stark white, and it looks like, the neighbors absolutely hate this. But she, she painted it.
Well, in the case of a larger project, most of these applicants seem to be, have architects working with them. And, you know, I don't think we need something elaborate, but at the public hearings, some.
You can get a paint sample for, you know.
Some presentation.
No concern over for larger projects, it's just more for the smaller homeowner level. But staff will take a, take a try at coming up with some language for the checklist, and we'll bring it back to the commission.
That would be fantastic.
That would be fine, thank you.
Okay, Rule 13, this is one that Noah brought up, was also one I had a concern with. It specifically comes to mind, the Domeni project, and how we actually did hear, wanted a pre-approval, so to speak, and then it did also, then it changed over to Ted Hall and went to the city council, so.
I was going to say, I think the council occasionally will refer projects to the planning commission, and that is completely appropriate. I just, to me, the council is the most appropriate body for conceptual review. When there's no application, there's no action being requested, and then if the council directs staff or the potential applicant to bring it back to the commission for input, completely.
Well, then maybe you want to put, put that in here.
Understood.
What I'm hearing Noah says, this is a perfectly complete statement. We just need to be aware of it and follow it, and from an agenda standpoint, when applicant or.
Your microphone.
When citizens, because they're applicants at that point, want to bring forth ideas for conceptual review, they need to be turned away by staff, and if they come up at public hearing, they need to be turned away by the chair. As, they can talk in public hearing, but they need to understand that what they're doing is talking in public hearing, they're not presenting an idea for preview, or for.
But that's something that would be okay to change, if everyone agreed to change it? There's no Brown Act or law or rule that would be.
It adds numerous issues because of the, just the chance that commissioner may voice an opinion on the project before there's any application, which could preclude them from voting on the project, because they express their support or opposition, or anything in between. It is very problematic from a staff perspective.
My thought, thank you.
I have something I'd like to discuss related to this. I mean, this is the only rule I found that related to something that I want to bring up. And that is the practice of meeting with applicants prior to public hearings. I know it has apparently gone on here for some time. I have not done it yet in my tenure, because I really don't think it's appropriate. And I would like to hear what other people think about it, and what benefit they see to doing it. I personally don't see anything that might be said in these meetings that shouldn't properly just be said to everyone at the public hearing, and for the benefit of the public. I think there might be some. The applicant might figure, well, I talked to you, and I talked to you, and I talked to you, and I talked to you, so now I come up and I can kind of shrink my presentation down, because you basically all know what my project is, anyway. And I think we cut out the public in that respect, and I just wonder what you think about continuing the process.
I think that what's going on with that, though, is that when there's applicants that, or their projects are not accessible for us to actually visit, that is where it has been incredibly useful to go see sites, specifically thinking of Big Rock Road and Bieber Road. It's, you can't, to actually see the site, you do need to meet with the applicant to get a feel for the area, and that's where it's been the most helpful. But I understand where you're coming. I usually just do a drive-by, or I go visit it on my own, without the applicant there, unless the applicant does want to speak to me, and that is just a goodwill.
Yeah, I think, I think a site visit is almost mandatory. But I think we could adopt procedures whereby the applicant could make their property available for people to come in and look on certain days before a hearing, without meeting with the applicant.
So, just, just staff's input on this, is there's what's called ex parte communication, which is not identified in any of our procedures, but it very much should be, and staff will be adding that to these, to the recommended changes. So what that allows is for commissioners to identify any information that they received from the applicant, to disclose that if they met with the applicant, if they visited the site, anything that was done by commissioners outside of this meeting to gain information on the project. It's called ex parte communication, very common, and it should be done before each item. The ability to meet with an applicant is, is fine legally, as long as it's disclosed, and as long as any information that's provided to the individual commissioners at that meeting is also provided in the public hearing to the public. So there are requirements or procedures set around how communication and information that's shared outside of the public hearing is also reiterated in the public hearing, so it doesn't allow the diluted presentation by the applicants that you were concerned about. Either way, if, if the commission directs staff to build up those types of procedures to try to address that, or to eliminate it, there's no problem. But staff will identify that there are these individual circumstances where it's challenging to get on-site because of private property, or locked gates, or any of those things. And there are legal procedures adopted and established to address it.
I just think that, you know, I've heard people come to the meeting and say, well, I did meet with the applicant. Well, I'd like to say, well, what did you talk about? You know, I, I don't think it's enough to just come and say that, and I think it leaves the public wondering, what did you talk about? And I realize it's not technically a Brown Act violation, but that's kind of like the baseline. And I think to make our whole process more transparent, we should find a way to have access to properties, so we can look at them. But I, I'm really not in favor of this meeting with people before meetings. They can say whatever they want to say to me at the public meeting.
And I will just say, any, any, any direction that comes out of this that substantially increases the amount of staff effort for coordination, it will be challenging for staff to be able to meet that. So I'm just imagining, because commissioners can't communicate with each other about how to get to a site, or when they're not going to be there because of Brown Act issues, the coordination of that alone on individual projects could become very, very challenging.
Well, what we've had now is I get emails from individual petitioners, saying, you want to come to my house and talk about my project, and here's the times that are available. We could simply have these same people say, you know, here's when I propose to have my property available, so that you can get in through the gate, or whatever, and if you have a problem, let me know. And I don't think it necessarily involves you having to do anything more.
But then that puts it on them to monitor, to make sure that multiple commissioners aren't showing up at the same time. That, it, it does complicate it.
I really hear what you're saying, but I really like to be able to do this, and it is risky. And I think one of the Brown Act risks is if the applicant starts talking about what another commissioner might have said, then there's that, whatever you call it, that telephone, or whatever it is.
Right.
Serial meetings. So perhaps, I would like to see it stay, because I learn a lot about the project by hearing what's, you know, by being with the applicant, because I might not know, you know, the details of what they're doing. If maybe there were a checklist that you guys could provide, these are the things we can talk about, and then just go down them, and essentially, you know, I mean, I don't mean, you know, you know, just. I can talk more about it. I can't think of anything right now, but if, if it were really clear, and then when we disclose here, I think it's important, what you said, when we disclose we were there, I think we should say what we talked about. We talked about, you know, this, and this, and this, and this, and this, and it could be something that's, that's objectified, different areas that we can cover, and nothing else. But I, I don't think, I don't think any individual commissioner should be required to do that if, if you don't feel comfortable doing it. But I would like to see that it's left, that it's still possible to do it for people who do feel comfortable doing it, and feel that they, they really get a better feel for the project when they actually can hear what the applicant is saying about it. But, you know, I totally understand what you're saying, too, but I guess it's legal, it is risky. There is a risk, and, and I think that we should have to disclose in more detail what, in a reasonable way, what we discussed here to the public when we're, when we're here.
And I can bring it up with the attorneys, to see if they have any recommendations as to how we could address it.
Or is it possible, because, you know, I'm a little torn. I, I find it helpful, especially in certain projects where, you know, you can see the blueprint and all, but there's, until you're, until you're actually physically there. Kind of the flip side, or counter to that, is the challenge of opponents to projects. You know, I find that I'm contacted by more of those, often, than proponents of projects, and I think we have to view it sort of all in context. And so if we're not going to meet with applicants, we have to shut the door on the opponents as well. And I, I would fear that that could cause some backlash, if people are ever going to feel they're shut out. But, because often, the same, you know, as much as we learn about the process and the project being there, we also can see the point of view of the opponent, and also find out if that point of view is, is real, or if it's perhaps imagined. I mean, there are times where we're told certain things are a problem, and we get out there and we find out, that's interesting, you know, one person doesn't like a two-story house, and the person complaining is living in a two-story house. You know, those are things that I wouldn't know unless I met him at his driveway, and I'm listening to him talk while I'm looking up. So those are things that, out of, and, you know, and that happens, and it has happened with projects since I've been here. So those are, and again, those are things that are context, that I don't know that we get here, that we do get in the field. But I absolutely share your concern that what happens in the field can't be isolated. So maybe there's a way to not coordinate, but say, we're, you know, the, the, the project site is going to be open from two to four. We all go together, because we're not going to talk about there. We can just all see, and look around. The property owner can say, here's this, this, and this. You can't even do that at the same time.
Do two at a time, but we can't.
Oh, because it's a meeting, okay. Like, you can't, you can't have the whole public seeing out there, right?
It's very challenging.
Open it to the public.
I don't know if this is helpful or not, but I will not go until after I've had, have the staff report and have read it.
Oh, yeah, no, I wait until I, I drive around, and I look in.
And they'll say to me, you're the last one to be here.
Yeah.
So I know who's been there and who hasn't. But I will not go until, until I've got a staff.
No, I do all of that as well, but the, again, to me, the more, the bigger challenge I find personally is the. challenge I find personally is the, the, everyone besides the applicant that reaches out, or folks that reach out on items that are not agendized, and we, we get a lot of that, you know, people that, you know, Hunter Project is not on the agenda, but there's a lot of folks that are real interested in Hunter Project and will call all the time, can we go walk on Hunter Project? Or, you know, just other topics like that. So I think this is a conversation that's not just limited to the applicant, but really how commissioners deal with citizens as it relates to items on the agenda and not on the agenda.
Yeah, the big change, I think, would be if we're more transparent here when we report on it.
So, so staff, staff will work on a checklist for ex parte communication and bring it back, and then from there, we can see if that kind of addresses some of your concerns, Commissioner Koberstein, and, and I'll also work with these.
What I'm hearing here is that there's a concern of balancing the transparency of the planning commission and also being available to the citizens, which is very equally important. So we just need to find that balance, and I think that a checklist would be helpful to kind of have on hand for when agenda items come up, you can just read it off, and there's our transparency.
And maybe we can, because it's, maybe we can kind of formalize that as part of the protocol here, that before we hear an item, we can say, did anyone go, you know, give some time, some formal time.
It can be right after the staff report, before we open up the public hearing, it can be, we can have the ex parte section.
I, I think there should definitely be a, a rule that deals with it.
Yeah.
And I, I draw a distinction between somebody who just wants to talk to you about something generally, you know, that may be going on, and the petitioner who's going to be here the next Tuesday, you know, who's, who's got you there, you know.
What about the neighbor of the petitioner, though, too?
You know, I, I don't, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I have yet to do this, and when people are here and they oppose things, I hear it loud and clear. I, I know exactly what they're talking about, and so I don't know that going there would have made any difference. And to me, it's a lot about appearances. I think the practice of doing this, you know, gives the appear, or perception that things are happening outside the meeting, even if they're not, and I, I.
I agree with that.
That's the reason I choose not to do it, and I, I would hate to have a petitioner come and say, well, when I met with you, you know, here's what you said.
Yeah.
You know, you just eliminate that.
It's just there needs to be happy balance because commissioners have been asked to leave the commission because they were hostile to citizens and weren't being as available as they should have been in the past, and so that does need to, you know, be in the fourth line, is that we are here for the citizens, not for ourselves.
Yeah, I think citizens are different than petitioners, though. The petitioners, the person.
What I'm saying with citizens, I'm talking about, you know, the people who are against a project, I think it's, they, they deserve as much of a voice as the petitioner does or the applicant does.
They can do it here. Yeah, no, I, I think it's, maybe we should even discuss it more, or think about it more and discuss it more, because, you know, it could turn into a he said, she said thing with the applicant, too, especially if you deny their project, but I don't know that that's ever happened, but you know, it is risky. I mean, it is risky, but it's, it seems like it's, I know it's risky, Bobby, because I've gone and visited the site after you, and they've tried to start talking about, well, Commissioner Monahan, stop. Yeah, yeah, so maybe we need to inform the applicants, too, that if they do call on us.
I would hope that none of us went and told them we either liked their project or we didn't like their project while we were there.
Yeah, I know, that's hard not to do.
Well, I don't find it very hard at all.
I don't find it hard at all.
Okay, well, maybe I should be with Mary and refuse to do them.
I think staff understands the concern and will, will take some steps to try to address it.
I think an ex parte checklist is a nice start to finding a solution here. Okay, Rule 14, this is the regular order of business. So Noah, you had said you want to kind of generalize it, move things together, maybe remove agenda forecasts.
Yeah, so essentially, staff would like to work on consolidating pretty much eight through 14 into a, a little bit different terminology and probably combine some of those, just because it's not common that we have individual signed permits on, you know, on the agenda, and does that need to be identified as a regular order of business? It's those types of things.
That makes sense.
So you will come back to us with a revised listing?
And I'll bring a, I'll, I'll bring a strike-through version or a red-line strike-through, so you can compare and contrast and identify whether you think it's a good idea or not.
That would be appreciated, and I know you've explained to me the, why the agenda forecast is not, doesn't need to be on there, but maybe you could come by with a explanation of that, too.
So I, I was told that it was removed because of the difficulty in meeting the Brown Act and, and identifying that projects will be coming up, but then also identifying that there can be no discussion on them. So the staff or the department report has kind of replaced the agenda forecast, and staff tries to be transparent in, in notifying the commission as to what's coming up, but also it's, because it's the department report and then it's at the very end, it, from staff's perspective, it, it kind of can put some kind of sideboards on the discussion.
Then I have a question. How can this body discuss things that they would like to see on the agenda? When, how can that happen, or is it, can it just doesn't happen? I mean, that we never can talk about an issue and to see whether we agree that we would like it on the agenda.
So, so there's, there's a number of ways things get on the agenda. Applicants file, project applications, staff identifies things that need to be brought to the commission, the council directs staff to work on things that then come to the commission, and then also of all of those, when we're going through our priorities, staff meets regularly with the chair and the vice chair to kind of set the agenda, notify them of projects that are coming forward. But separate from that, if there's an issue that one commissioner has that they feel very passionate about, it's challenging for that commissioner to get that on the agenda, especially if it's not consistent with council direction.
If it is consistent, I, I understand, if it is consistent with council direction, like if you go to a council meeting and you hear them say something, and then you come back and you want it.
Sure, so I'll use the example of, of Commissioner Kitchener's Color and Material Board request. So I, I've been working here six months now, I, I think I've heard that at least once a month since, and so it is, it is on the list.
Probably more than that.
Maybe, maybe, so it is on the list of things that we'd like to work on doing. Frankly, it's a kind of a juggling of priorities, and so obviously we have not brought that back before, we just committed to doing it, so, so there is a way that it can be done, but it has to be kind of woven within the priorities of the department and the staff and the council and the chair and vice chair.
So when, when Commissioner Kitchener mentioned that tonight, was that, you know, was that?
I would say it was the fact that Commissioner Kitchener has mentioned it every night for six months.
Oh, no, but is that trying to get something on the agenda, is that, because, you know, that wasn't agendized, but it was, you know.
It's part, it's kind of part of this because it's tied to that.
Okay.
And Bobby, my guess is that whatever you want to be on the agenda is on the priority list, it's just being juggled around with other issues that are going on right now.
If something new came up, that's all I'm wondering, I mean, I, I would really, I, I, maybe it's not the purpose, but I, I wondered if, I really, we can't, because I can never talk to you.
So, so, so here's.
I don't know.
Send, send me an email with some ideas that you'd like to have discussed, and I'll bring it up to the chair and the vice chair, and we'll see if it's something that.
So that would be the way to do it, okay, to, to get to you, you'll get to them, and then, does anyone else have?
Well, it, it just strikes me in the trying not to violate the Brown Act, we are stifling discussion here, or stifling the ability to bring something up for discussion, which is kind of weird, you know, because the whole Brown Act is about getting everything out there, you know, and talking about it in the public. So I'm not sure, what was agenda forecast used for? Was it for people to sit around and say, here's what we'd like?
Well, the staff, I, I've never done it, but I, from what I've been told, the staff would say, here's the things that are coming up on future agendas, but then the commission would tend to want to discuss them, and that's a violation of the Brown Act.
It would, it would just be the next agenda items, issues, like we're going to have a design review, we're going to do this, it's going to be this.
It was never the opportunity for the commission to say, could we?
That's not my recollection, my recollection is that we did hear those forecasts, but when, I remember bringing something up that I had talked to someone on the council about, and they encouraged me to bring it up, and I had some written in order to explain what it was, I had a few sentences that were written, and it sounded like discussion, and I remember, you know, you were very worried about the Brown Act, so you just all said, shut up, and, and, but I, but I want, yeah, what?
Well, I was just going to say, the, the problem was, is it happened many times, not, not just you, but we, we would say, okay, this item's coming up, this item's coming up, and then, oh, that reminds me of this, and then commissioners start talking about things and we have to.
I mean, we absolutely, we absolutely used to talk about things, because I remember several years ago, we absolutely talked about things that we wanted to see on the agenda, but those were Brown Act violations, because we would discuss how we, why we wanted it on the agenda, which is giving it an opinion, which is against the rules.
It was pulled that direction of the city attorney.
Okay, but I had, I had pulled this, and I had been given the language by the city council person, so maybe it was wrong, but I, I do, I, okay, I'm hearing what you're saying, and maybe we, I need, or maybe all of us, but maybe I need some instruction on how to do it without getting everybody afraid, but I, I agree with Commissioner Koberstein that we don't have any, it seems that we don't have any opportunity to discuss anything like that, and I really would, I really would like that, because I really want to talk to you guys sometimes about some.
Well, I would suggest to you, what I used to do when Victor was interim planning director, is I would email him and say, I would love for this to be on the agenda, can you somehow fit this in? And I would just email him every two weeks after the meeting, I'd be like, can we get, can, that's how I got FAR, I'm like, can we talk about FAR? Kept pushing that for months and months and months.
Can we just make that, what, what this is at the end of the meeting? It could almost be like a public forum, I can say, you know.
I think it's dangerous to do it with us all here, because we all want to then comment on how we also want it to.
Let's table this discussion to the Land Use 101 presentation where the attorney will be there, so we can ask for legal opinion directly from Tom Brown, the city attorney.
I just wonder, I mean, have you guys with more experience, have you ever seen that happen in a, in a productive legal way?
Not, it is, I've never seen issues raised by one commissioner, I, I've never seen the ability of one commissioner to raise an issue to the level of discussion without council support or unanimous support from the commission. So, just again, getting back to Commissioner Kitchener's example, is, is, you know, when it's something that kind of challenges or stymies the commission process repeatedly, then that's something that staff needs to work on to address. So those types of things, if it's, for example, we should prohibit X, Y, or Z activities, and that's just an opinion of one individual, that may never come to an agenda.
Well, no, if it's something, okay, I mean, we can continue, but if it's something that supports the council direction, I mean, I understand that it has to be in keeping with what the council wants, if it is in that category, and we just want to bring it up to say, would you guys be in agreement that we could have this, that we should have this on a future agenda? We wouldn't have to discuss our reasons or anything, but just is everyone in agreement for that?
Well, then, then the council should get it to staff, and staff should bring it, not you.
Yes, council should direct staff to work on those types of issues, and then staff will do that.
I have to go to the council to, to.
Give me a call or send me an email, and we could talk about your individual issues, and then we'll see, because they may be already on the list that's coming up, or they may be things that staff is working on.
You can't really be an advocate, because you're a commissioner.
That's exactly right.
Well, can there be a public repository of these items? Because we talked about this list that exists, where is the list? Can we see the list? I mean, how does this list go into order? How is it prioritized?
Sure, the, the list can be, can be provided, I mean, I think, I think Commissioner Kitchener brought it a few weeks ago, we have it as kind of things that we need to, to work on. Prioritization is kind of on staff because we have numerous, you know, juggling priorities, and the entire planning department's in this room right now, so it's not a lot of options to be able to, you know, I mean, there's, there's state mandates that come down, there's the typical department administration, there's applications coming through, and then there's, there's the kind of other issues that are outstanding that staff knows are kind of, we call them parking lot issues, frankly, it's something that we know that we want to work on when we get time.
Can we get, can we get that list, or can it be part of this, our meeting?
See, now, I was under the impression that you were here when we went, we created the list.
Yeah, I know, but I can't remember everything.
I wasn't.
We'll provide a copy to the commissioners.
Can that be your future forecast? It's not anything we discuss, it's just sitting out there and it gets.
I'm hesitant to, to try to put dates and times on a, on a list, because it's, it's very expansive.
There may be dates and times, that's the point, it's just kind of a.
What's on it would be interesting.
An evergreen list, as something gets completed, it comes off and you move up the, everything moves up the pecking order. That seems to me a reasonable thing for the public to realize what you're pulling from and.
I'll talk about the city attorney, because then it sets.
That seems much more clandestine.
Well, but it just, it sets expectations also, and if staff's not able to meet those expectations, I mean, it's, it's a complicated issue, but I will talk to the attorney about it and see their opinion.
We should have a disclaimer at the top.
I understand.
A lot of what we're dealing, a lot of what we're dealing with, though, is that the, it is the city council right now in this time and space is, we're receiving a lot of direction from the city council. The planning commission does not have a lot of wiggle room right now, because we're dealing with the general plan, and then the municipal code is up, and we're all fully aware that those things are present, and they're taking up staff's time. So the list is not actually being touched, because those are the things that take a massive priority.
Well, and in addition to that, council adds to our list of, of tasks constantly, so.
But if we saw what it was, it would give us a sense like, someday, some, someday.
So we'll think about it as maybe planning commission priority list, or maybe not even that terminology, but I'll work with the attorneys, I'll come up with something, and, and I think it's in everyone's best interest, I mean, to see kind of what's going on behind the scenes in the department separate from just two times a month when we meet, I completely understand that.
All right. Moving on to Rule 17. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, no, Rule 17, yeah.
Who had that?
I'd like Rule 17 explained to me.
Yeah, I think.
And I'd like to know the difference between that and, and what's in 18.
It's the timing, I think.
Yeah, that's exactly correct, so it's, Rule 17 basically says, any comments provided to staff need to be forwarded on to the planning commission for your review as a part of your decision. Rule 18 says, comments submitted to staff after the, the agenda's completed, so then it kind of provides procedures as to how we bring that information to you.
Any questions?
What about?
Kind of seems, I mean, to me, it seems straightforward, I think the challenge as a commissioner, especially in the advent of electronics, since we're trying to get more things electronic, some of those documents are not easily rendered or interpreted when they're teeny tiny on a cell phone and we're driving here for the meeting, so I think there needs to be even one further cut at that timing, that, you know, anything that's provided to staff after three o'clock on the, or one o'clock or whatever on a commission day is only going to be photocopied and be on the dais, or something like that.
Yeah, typically, I try to use 12 noon as the cutoff, but, you know, there has been flexibility, it's, it just depends on what my availability is and all that.
Well, I got, I guess my problem was, how do we get to the public, then?
Hard copies are always provided to the public in the back in the folder, but so typically, up until 12 noon, the day of the meeting, staff will forward those comments on to commissioners, and then hard copies will be provided to the public, and then anything after 12 noon or one o'clock, hard copies are only provided at the dais for commission review and in the back. Does that timing seem to work?
I, I guess what bothers me, then, is that, that Mary asked for something, and I, and I received it on email today, but I've seen it no place else. I haven't seen it here, and I didn't see it back there.
So I didn't look back then.
This is for the AP map?
Yeah. That's the kind of, that's.
Well, that was my point, is that.
That's my question between the two.
That's why, at a certain cutoff, that it's not going to be sent digitally, because it's too hard, it's just going to be here when we get here waiting.
Yeah, and anything that staff sends to the commission should be printed and provided to the public copy as well, in the public folder.
So get it early.
That's what I'm concerned with on those, too, thank you.
All right. Just ask a point of clarification. What about our communications to you?
So if a question is asked for clarification, staff will typically restate that question with an answer and resend it to the entire commission. I believe you asked me one question about some additional information on one of the items last.
I asked you if you could give me some background on one of the tasting room things, just so I would.
That's correct, and so I, in that situation, I only provided it to you because the other commissioners had been a part of that decision, but generally, if one commissioner has a question, it's probably not the, you're probably not the only one, and so staff generally tries to respond by providing that to all commissioners, and I think that occurred today when you requested the AP map, it was sent to all commissioners.
That's correct.
So that's generally how staff likes to operate and thinks it's, it's in the best Generally how staff likes to operate and thinks it's in the best interest of everyone.
If it's not, ooh, if it's not too much trouble or a Brown Act violation. I mean, like, I would have liked to have seen what you answered because I don't always remember. But, you know, any question that, and it's always interesting, I mean, it's always useful to see what's on people's mind.
Sure.
So if, I would, unless it's something wrong with it.
No, that's completely okay and that's our job as staff is to provide clarifying information if there's something that's not clear and the staff report. And we very much appreciate getting the questions ahead of time.
Because what Commissioner Kovacian might want clarified, I might not even think of, but I might want to see.
In this case, she was just asking for a copy of the AP map which was sent there.
Yeah, I did.
Perfect. Any other questions on Rule 17 or 18? Okay, moving on to 19.
Okay, now, I don't think this needs to change, but I just wanted to make a statement about this rule because I think that it's important that there is language at every meeting when inviting, addressing public for public comment as opposed to inviting, presenting public for public comment that states clearly that one may give your name and address before speaking. Because recently, there was a man, I believe it was at the city council meeting, within the last six months, and he did not want to give his name and he wasn't aware that he didn't have to until after he got really nervous and, until after he was asked, actually. And it wasn't presented to him in the language, you may give your name, but you don't have to. I know that, but usually when the chair will say, would you please give your name and address? Would you please state your name and address? And I think it's really important for this, the chair, this chair and the.
Mayor.
Yeah, the mayor to say, to make it clear, you don't have to, that you may give it, but you don't have to. I think, I don't know how to make that happen, but I think it's important.
That's a style, that's a style point by the person running the meeting. It's not a, we're not going to ever force anyone to give their address, but it is requested.
Well, I think you see, I think it should be requested. Well, then I would request that whoever chairs this, say, you may give your name because it's misleading and it's not, I don't, it's coercive and I don't, and someone may not want to. And I think that they should know they don't have to, but, all right, if no one else is concerned, I can.
I think it's relevant to know if somebody lives in town or not, though, you know.
They don't have to though. I mean, it may be relevant, but the person doesn't have.
But you give the weight to the comment, you know, taking that into consideration.
Most people will do it, but I think it's legally up to the person. I think they should know they have that option, that's all. And if you say, would you please state that, and they don't know this law, that's not letting them know they have the option before they make the decision. I don't know, just. Okay, no one else cares then.
I don't think they're being forced to give their name. I say, if you could please state your name for the record. I don't even ask for the address anymore, I just ask for the name just so I could say thank you to them at the end of their comments, so.
Well, okay, I, yeah.
Yeah.
I would just.
I mean, I am sensitive to people being nervous at the podium, so I definitely would. And if they were looking nervous, I'd be like, you don't have to state your name if you're uncomfortable.
Since it's legal to have anonymity, I just think that possibility should be known and most people don't know it, but I'll drop it, that's, that was it.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't have to, that's the law, they don't have to.
The rule doesn't require them to, but it is common to ask just to understand their perspective, whether they live next door to the project or across town or out of town or out of the county.
Say, you may state your name, that's all. I just, I would just like to use the language that they have in number 19, so, but.
Noted.
So you know my feelings, my feelings.
Rule 20, this is the fun one, changing how public hearings are recorded. I'm in agreement with the three minutes, changing down three minutes and removing H and I. I also, I also, I also am agreeing with the changing out rebuttal for response. I would actually add, if we could take out debate and add discussion.
I would like to add something to D where we have the 10 minutes. You know, down at the bottom, the chair can give the public the opportunity to talk some more. I think that the applicant should have the opportunity to talk some more if 10 minutes isn't enough. So I would just like to.
I think that is going to be a rule that's addressed with Rule 29, with the bylaws temporarily suspended by unanimous consent. We could temporarily suspend the 10 minutes.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to vote on it though. I mean, I would just like it to be your discretion. You know, your 10 minutes is up, but, you know.
I'll modify the note a little bit to make it a little more flexible, that's good.
Well, I personally do not agree with eliminating H and I. I think everyone doesn't always take that time and I think the more generous we are with the opportunity for the public to weigh in at every, you know, I think that's really important. People complain about it and I think it's, I don't think it's that much trouble. I mean, is it really?
So as I mentioned, staff will bring back red line version of the changes and the commission can vote on each one number by number. That way, everyone who has their opinion can be heard.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, Rule 23.
Well.
This was a fun one.
I raised this one because this doesn't make sense to me at the end. It uses majority as, you know, three out of five of us, so that you have a quorum. So at the last sentence, if we don't have a quorum for a motion on which we have final authority, it's deemed denied. That seems like an odd outcome to me. If it just so happens that three of us can't be here at a meeting, the petition has been denied. It should just be maybe automatically continued or something.
A tie should be continued. We haven't come up, we don't have enough information to have gained a majority to have a decision. I mean, I think this came up recently with the Harvest Inn. And I don't think that's the intention, to deny someone simply because we can't come to agreement.
I think it's, I think the operative word there is unable. So it's not necessarily because of absences, but it's basically recusals or essentially a quorum cannot be made to vote on it. The item dies and they have the option to appeal it to the city council.
Well, I think that should be clarified. If you can't get a quorum because people have to recuse themselves, that's different from just not having a quorum because people are on vacation or something. And I don't think a petitioner should just be kicked out of the box if there's no quorum.
I completely agree with that and there is a provision that allows, I think it's Rule 22, the applicant with the permission of the planning commission withdraw any matter pending before the commission at any time prior to the commission acting on such matters. So I think that's there to kind of bolster this 23 situation that you're referencing. I'll look at it and see if we can make some improvement.
But if they're withdrawing, that to me sounds more permanent, that they've pulled them, you know, again, it just, and I haven't been here that long, but it was a pretty poignant example when a tie was going to mean a denial on something that.
Well, a tie is always a denial. This is a little bit of a different situation, I think it's saying because the majority is unable to be assembled on a motion.
Well, the last sentence, I don't, I guess I view as a whole nother statement regardless of quorum or not, that.
That's correct.
If we're all here, you know, and someone would recuse, we could all be present and there would be a recusal. We only have four of us.
That's correct.
We have a quorum then.
Right, so we have a quorum, but it's a tie. I mean, I think this statement is not talking about not having a quorum, it's talking about a tie.
And it wouldn't make any difference whether it came back to the next meeting or not because you still had that thing for people.
Okay, I read this completely differently. I read it completely differently, saying like, if you don't get minority or majority vote, then you don't win. I mean, if a majority is unable to be assembled, if you're unable to have a majority relating to a specific item, then it's deemed denied. It's just basically saying if you don't.
It should be clarified between the quorum.
But that's how I read it.
And the voting.
It's because quorum is mentioned and then majority is mentioned and then ties mentioned, okay.
And I personally think that 22 is really for the benefit of the applicant and somebody may decide they want to redo something or they don't want to risk a denial and so they pull it off the table. I think that's a little bit different.
But they're not pulling it out of the commission then, they can, they're just in their own words continuing it.
Continuing, and continuances are.
Can we say that in here? Can we put?
Yeah, because they're not referenced anywhere in here and there needs to be some clarification regarding continuances. So that's also something that I was going to work with the attorneys on to try to.
Okay, good.
But I want to know, if they are denied because they can't have a quorum and they have to appeal it to the city council, if they can't, if the quorum is, that's not anything that's their fault.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So they shouldn't have to pay for the appeal, don't they just get to appeal?
That's, if you cannot get a quorum because of, because of recusals or, I don't think absences count, but there is rules in Roberts Rules as to how to assemble a quorum. Essentially, say, you all lived in the same neighborhood and a project was proposed, so there was no way you could not have a conflict. There's a way under Roberts Rules to assemble that and it requires drawing straws, but I will do some research on it.
But, but if that's not the case and it's not their fault that there wasn't a quorum and they need to, and they need to go to the city council according to this rule, they shouldn't have, to appeal. They shouldn't have to pay for that appeal.
I think Chair Parker identifies that this rule says if you cannot, if you don't get a majority to support your project, it's denied.
Well, yeah.
It has nothing to do with the.
I'm talking about.
However, that's the same problem that it's not the applicant's, it may not be the merit of the applicant or the project, it may simply be the number of heads sitting here in these seats that is not in their control.
This is going back to the tie issue.
Yeah, well, and even majority. I mean, if there's more of us that have, the church might have been a good example. If in fact, as parishioners, we would have all had recused, there's three people sitting up here, they would have been looking at denial simply by the fact that three people recused and I don't think that's the purpose.
Yeah, I don't think that's accurate either. I'll work with the attorney to figure out.
We didn't have to in that case, but had we all been on.
There's only two, if there's only two commissioners, then what do you do is kind of the question.
Well, I would suggest that we just kind of clean up Rule 23 and separate it out. So one section's about quorum and one section's about voting because I think it is confusing. I think, I think that this middle section right here that I have bracketed is really about, if you don't have a majority, then it's denied, it's just that simple. But I think the quorum part is throwing it off and there needs to be, I mean, considering some, that quorums are important and also, is it a quorum because they're not actually presently here or because of recusal? That needs to be clarified.
Understood.
It depends on where they are, if they're on vacation.
All right, Rule 24.
Okay, I had, I discussed this with you already, Noah. I just thought there should be added at the end of that, of the second sentence, another sentence. If there is no second, the item is denied because it was unclear to me, what happens if there's no second on that second thing?
So this, I've been looking at this, so on matters of procedure or order of business, so we want to hear item four ahead of item two. The chairperson shall make a motion without a second.
And after calling for objection and hearing none, so order, in the event of objection, the chairperson shall call for a second and a roll call vote. If there's no second on that, then the item is denied.
No, it's not a denial, this is just moving items around.
But it says here that in the event of an objection, then the chairperson shall call for a second and a roll call vote.
Nothing can be approved if there is, if there is no second, then nothing can be approved.
But you don't say that. I was just.
But I think that's, that's typical in any procedure. If any motion's made, if there's no second, it dies.
Okay, so you don't need to put, I'm the only one that's confused by that, okay?
You never get to a vote.
It's Roberts Rules.
If you don't, if you don't think it would make it clearer to add that, fine, that's all right.
But since we stay at the beginning, somewhere at the beginning, that we're sort of, our foundational rules are Roberts Rules of Order. We don't have to keep restating those kinds of things. But a couple of these have not, they've sort of dithered off of.
And continuances aren't really discussed in Roberts Rules either, which is.
They're kind of important. Okay, Rule 27, Bobby, these were yours.
Oh, yeah, okay. What is any other item? Testimony and argument relative to any other item on the agenda shall generally follow the procedure. I mean, after 26, it, I don't understand what that means. All proceeding, this is where that is.
Well, these aren't, this would be items that are not applicant-driven, right?
I have no idea, that's why I'm asking. I don't know what any other item means. On the agenda shall generally follow the procedure of the public hearing as may be modified at the discretion of the chairperson. Is that what?
I take that as, yeah, I take that as saying anything on the agenda should be treated as a public hearing unless it's specifically stated as not. So this item, for example.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And maybe this isn't the time to ask this, but just from my own understanding, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, but when our town came in and did their presentation and there was clearly some misunderstanding of what.
Was communicated.
What was communicated, but more importantly on that, to me, and it sort of, kind of relates a little bit to the agenda for Rule 14, but a little bit to this as other matters, is if they're going to be public, just public information, not public comment, but public informational, which really that's what that was, then can we say that those items come early in the agenda so that, out of courtesy for the person presenting, they get the full house? Because if we save those sorts of things for now, they end up with an empty house. So we have people putting a lot of effort into getting that finally getting on an agenda and then being sort of tabled to no man's land.
That situation was unique. That agenda was extremely crowded. There was hesitancy to include her on that agenda versus pushing her to the next agenda. She requested that agenda item to be heard then and I think there was other factors. The continuance of a large project, which do get heard first. I think it's because it was public hearings, I can't remember the specifics, but there was a reason why that item was put to the end. And I think having the flexibility to set the agenda based on the circumstances of that meeting is important to staff.
But under this rule we just discussed, which one was it? The second? The chair could propose, could have proposed at that meeting to advance that. And then if there was no second, it would have been so ordered. Or if there was a second and a vote, it may have advanced. So there is that discretion to do that, always.
So staff does our best based on the procedures identified and kind of all of the items, but then if at the discretion of the chair, they want to modify it.
And typically in the past, and you know, that's not always a good example or a good reasoning, but presentations have always been at the end because they usually don't have an audience attached to it. The presentations are for us to be informed, not necessarily public at large. There's been several examples in the past with that. So I understand that with hers, I think that there was just a miscommunication. I just really thought it was a presentation on just for us. It wasn't to have a discussion or.
So let's get away from the, that was somewhat of a unique, that was somewhat of a unique situation.
Well, could we just, can we speak about how things are agendized? Because I think by having such a narrow description, we, you know, we close the door. If that item, and I wasn't here, I watched it on the tape, if it had been agendized as presentation and discussion with the commission, you could have had this discussion that everybody seemed to be struggling about whether you could do it or not, you know, and which she clearly anticipated. I mean, is it a big problem to add those words to the agenda? It gives you the ability to talk about it if you want to.
There are numerous factors and background to that item and council direction is one of them. So the, I'm hesitant to add, this gets back to the, we work at the direction of the council. So it's, I'm hesitant to add much more flexibility in what's there and that item is going before the council on the 27th for a discussion. And I'd like to just leave it at that.
All right, moving on to Rule 28.
Okay, I, again, I'm just, okay, it says, any rule, these bylaws may be altered, amended or repealed by majority vote of the commission except that such alteration, amendment or repeal shall not affect any pending matter. It seems to me that Rule number nine, 11, 12, 13, 18, 22, 23, and 25 should be exceptions because it seems to me that we can't really just, just change them.
That's exactly what this is saying, you can't change the rules on pending.
No, it's saying that you can.
Unless, no. The wording is funky, I have a note that says wording is funky. I'm like, except if, it should say, except if any alteration, amendment, or repeal will affect any pending matters. I think reads it in not as a negative.
Well, it may be altered, amended, or repealed.
Unless you've got a current.
Yeah, I understand the exception, but I'm not talking about that. You mean that any, if it doesn't affect any pending matter, we could change Rule number nine, Rule number 11, Rule number 12?
Yeah.
Like we're doing now.
Seems to me that those are, those are rules that, I mean, particularly the one that I asked Noah about if there were a Brown Act problem and he said that would be very hard on staff to change the rule, the first one I asked you about.
But we're doing Rule 28 right now.
I understand that.
What? We're doing, we're, right now, we're inside Rule 28. We are altering, amending, and repealing.
But this is at any meeting that we could do this.
It says shall not affect any pending.
I know.
This doesn't say at any meeting.
Exactly, but what, so it doesn't, if that's not the case, but we just want to change one of those rules for some reason, that's not that reason, we could just change those rules even though they're, some of them are, you know, just.
This just gives you the ability to change as life moves on and things newish, information.
Like a few years ago, we changed.
We're doing this currently.
Yeah, we're doing Rule 28 right now, we're actively.
I know, but with this, this has been agendized for us to do it, but at any.
That's exactly it.
I think your concern may be Rule 29.
Well, this is going to be something we need to separate recently.
I have the same question for Rule 29. I thought it was the same thing. If we could do this at any meeting, we're doing it now because it's agendized to do it. But if we just.
But Brown Act supersedes all that. We always have to have on the agenda to talk about it. But what this gives us is the flexibility to do what we do once it's on the agenda.
And again, it's.
And not say we're living, these aren't going to be etched in marble.
And I would just remember, Rule 28, any changes to the bylaws have to be approved by the council.
Yeah, and then also, it's not, it can't, we can't change anything.
For a meeting, we could suspend the Rule nine, we could.
According to 29, yes. And the goal of that is to allow meeting flexibility. If there's some meetings such as, some bylaws such as, I would say, a good example would be the regular order of business, Rule number 14, which the commission has not followed.
Right, I think there would be some.
Or for example, Rule four.
Wait a second, I was suggesting having some exceptions. Like I thought that any matter that, number 12 would be something that we couldn't just capriciously or that we couldn't just change. And that was one that, you know, that you said would be really difficult if we changed. That would be hard on staff. and that was one that, you know, that you said would be really difficult if we changed, that would be hard on staff. I, I just think that some of these rules shouldn't be changed ever, you know, I mean, some of them would seem pretty important to maintain in order to have a.
I, I think that the, the concern over changing an individual rule would, would best be voiced in the discussion for that, changing that individual rule.
So in your mind, there are no rules here that would be, that would be an exception from.
Well, Bobby, here's, well, here's the example, Bobby.
If they don't apply to Roberts Rules, you can't change.
Or, for example, Bobby, what happens if Brown, the Brown Act changes, and we can have it, then we can change Rule twelve.
Well, okay, I guess I'm not communicating very well.
The whole point of Rule twenty-eight is just that we can edit the bylaws as we move on with time.
I just thought that there were some of these bylaws that seemed to not be very amenable to editing.
But again, it's like, like I said, if the Brown Act goes away and it's replaced with something else, and somehow we are allowed to have conversations, and we're allowed to discuss on Rule twelve, we're allowed to have public forum and have a discussion on it, somehow in the future that becomes legal for us to do, then we have, Rule twenty-eight will allow us to change Rule twelve.
Okay, I understand.
Is your concern, Bobby, that we would do this kind of ad hoc, we'd be sitting here, and I'd say, I want to change this rule because it makes, it affects things right now?
I'm not concerned about that, about us doing that, not about us, but I, I just thought that there were some rules on here that didn't seem to lend themselves to, you know, that they, they really needed to be adhered to, otherwise we would be
I believe, I believe that's true, I, I don't believe we could change Rule eight, I don't believe we could change Rule nine.
Right, I mean.
I mean, you've got to have a quorum in order to conduct a meeting.
But again, as I said, in the future, government law and state law and could change, to say you don't need a quorum for whatever reason.
Are there any other commissioners that have concerns over Rule twenty-nine?
Probably not.
No.
Sorry.
Okay. No, I look at that rule as a rule that.
That's not what we're talking about, twenty-eight, we're on twenty-eight, it's both.
They're sort of part and parcel, but I, I think that, again, some intelligence has to be applied to this, and we're not going to, this is giving you the flexibility, if you, if you ever need it, but that's not to say you're going to go and change things out of order.
I just thought maybe some exceptions should be put there, but, okay, and for number thirty-two.
Wait, one second, wait, Bobby, for twenty-eight, can you change the wording for that, after the except, it does read a little funky with the negative? Just in, for in the future, thank you. Where's the negative? It says, except that such alteration, amendment, or repeal shall not affect, it just, the way it reads with the first sentence is that it, it just reads funky.
I'll see if I can improve it.
What? Okay, any rule by these bylaws may be altered, amended, or repealed by a majority vote of the commission, except that such alteration, that the except that such alteration makes you lead, the way I read it was that it, never mind.
It doesn't affect anything that's pending.
I understand, it is.
I think it's fine the way it is.
I just like, except if any such alteration, that's all I wanted to say, except if any alteration affects. That's why it's a negative, because it's saying, it doesn't, it's, it's actually stated correctly.
It's very literally.
I know, it's saying the same thing, I'm just reading it differently. Yeah, I know, okay, Rule twenty-nine, are we good with Rule twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Okay. Rule thirty-two.
Well, I thought that it wasn't true, failure to adhere to any of these rules does not result in the invalidation of any decision. I thought that if there, if there was a violation of the Brown Act.
That's separate from the bylaws, though, that's, you have to look at this as one piece in numerous pieces that regulate how the meeting is run. And so what this is saying is, not a Brown Act, separate from a violation, if something in the St. Helena rules where there's no other jurisdiction adopting a regulation, if, if the commission does something to not follow these bylaws that is not governed by any other rule, that's not going to invalidate a decision or an action.
The election, the lack of election of a chair is a perfect example, that people could come in for the last four months and say, you didn't have the right chair, everything you've done throughout, and this is saying that's not true.
Excellent example.
Thank you.
And there's nothing on here that.
Okay, Rule thirty-three.
Maybe we could just add a rule that nothing in here supersedes, you know, requirements of the Brown Act, or other state law, or, you know, Roberts Rules, something, so that they blend together.
But other, I think, kind of like you're going to do with continuance, it's just a boilerplate.
Yeah, I don't think we're trying to redefine what constitutes a quorum.
Right.
But we might want to change the procedure or the agenda orders or something.
Noah, do you have enough? Do you have plenty?
More than enough.
Alright.
So I don't, I don't have a set timeframe for when this will come back, so you know, I will work on.
It's in the parking lot.
Well, it's, it's a little closer than the parking lot, but, and I do have a department report, separate from this, just very briefly, as I mentioned, there is a joint city council, planning commission meeting scheduled for October twenty-seventh, and that is planning, or land use one-on-one, I'm sorry, so some of these more sticky questions that need some input from the city attorney, we will have the city attorney there, it's myself and the city attorney presenting to yourselves and the planning commission, and I think that, I'm sorry, and the city council, and I think the question about getting things agendized is a good question for that discussion, so I'll work on adding that into the presentation, we're working on it right now. Separate from that, I wanted to agendize a follow-up discussion for land use one-on-one for the December third meeting, just in case there are things that aren't resolved, because there's a lot of information we're going to be providing, so in case you have additional questions that come out of it, it would be great if you could send those questions to staff early, we could work on getting some answers for you, and then we'd have an agendized follow-up discussion on that to allow, basically to flesh it out similar to this, but to get answers for, for you on any, on anything that's unanswered or if additional questions are raised from the presentation.
What, what date did you say that was?
December third.
So the, the.
Thursday, December third?
Is it a Thursday? I was.
It is in my phone.
It's the first, I'm sorry, it's December.
Okay.
November third, sorry.
Yeah, it's supposed to be November third, my apologies.
Okay, next meeting.
Yeah, so the meeting after, I was going to agendize a discussion so we could talk about it.
Okay, I got you.
We're skipping months, keeping the right day.
My apologies, and then, just so you know, we are looking at the short-term rental ordinance coming back before the planning commission on November seventeenth, so that will be a very lively meeting, a lot of attendance anticipated, and we will be asking for direction on kind of a menu of options that we will take to the council. It's staff's intention to kind of provide some background information, provide a menu of options that staff recommends, and then it's our intention to forward that same menu onto the city council, however, with input from the planning commission to support any of those changes, or if the planning commission doesn't support any of them, then that would be forwarded as well, but that's the intention of the, the structure of the staff report, as we're currently planning it.
Can I ask a question about that, since I have to recuse, is there any way that can be the last item, so I can, because that will be a long discussion that I can leave, and not have some little item at the end?
Completely, and, and we're, right now, we're hoping to make it the only item, because it's so large.
Yeah, well, if there's any voting before, but I just meant, rather than have some item at the following, absolutely.
If we have any questions or suggestions on that whole issue, do you want to hear that before the meeting, or we just hold everything until?
No, you're free to provide, definitely questions, no problem, suggestions, staff's heard a lot of suggestions up until this point. So, you know, of course, we'll welcome it, just please, kind of temper your expectations a little bit, and then, and then the, the goal of staff is to, is to take the unanimous recommendation of the commission forward to the council, even if it's separate from staff's kind of menu of options that we're going to propose.
Unanimous.
As best as we can get.
I'll bring cookies that night.
And then, and then there is a, there is, it's typically, we cancel the first meeting of the year, which is on January fifth, two thousand sixteen, this year, and it's because it's extremely difficult for staff to prepare the agenda and do all that work during the holidays when there's a lot of vacations and all those things, so I would just like to ask if the commission is okay with canceling the January fifth meeting.
I'm fine with that.
Two meetings in December, the first and the fifteenth, and then the second meeting in January would be to hold an election for the chair and the vice chair, based on today's discussion.
Well, I guess that gets back to the question I was going to raise, if you have to then revise the bylaws, and then they go to, back to us, and then they go to the council, is it possible to do that?
We may not get the full bylaws done by that time, however, we didn't hold it in January, or in July either, and you have the ability to exercise, was it Rule twenty-eight?
Yes.
To modify the rules accordingly, so, so that, excellent point, thank you very much, and I will strive to do that, but we may not get it back before council, I do intend to have the red line version to you by then.
Alright, thank you so much, and this meeting is adjourned.